Welcome to the school committee meeting of March 16th, 2016. I'd like to remind everybody this meeting is being broadcast live and is also being recorded for use at a later date. So again, thank you all for coming. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Also, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 9th.
So move second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining. Get that, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, it's great to see everyone here this evening. I also want to, maybe Josh has a report he'd like to give?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we let you do that first?
All right, sure. So semester three has begun for all the students, as I'm sure you all know. Yesterday, Whitman-Hanson students were invited to listen to the story of a woman named Kathy. Kathy's daughter, Taylor, died due to underage drinking, and Kathy's story was presented to us yesterday, our students, as a firsthand account of the dangers presented in high school that teams are subjected to. Over 100 Whitman-Hanson students will be in Europe in just under a month, so preparations for the trip are being finalized, and students are very excited. These students are going to Germany, Austria, and Poland. That's pretty cool. Whitman-Hanson's annual food week is currently ongoing, that's why I'm wearing my stuff for tourist day, and tomorrow's St. Patrick's Day theme also. A few students in the history department participated in the preliminary round of National History Day, and I believe one student qualified for the state tournament, so that's pretty cool. I was part of that last year, and it's a really cool program, so I'm glad more students are participating. National Honor Society is holding a book drive at the high school, and Honor Society students will use these donated books to read to the elementary students. The books will then be donated accordingly, and NHS student Connor Keen is heading up that program. So that was all him, he started that from the ground up, so that's pretty impressive. And lastly, as I'm sure most of you know, the boys' basketball team had a historic season this year, and the boys competed at the Garden last night, and what I think is equally impressive is we had 10 fan buses from the school, a lot of students on the tee, and a lot of students driving in that went to support it, so a lot of super fans that went. It was a lot of fun, I was there, I saw a few of you there as well, and it was really fun, so I'm glad we got to participate in that, and it was definitely a very memorable one for Whitman-Hanson.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Any questions for Josh? I can add to that, I happen to be at the Garden, and there was thousands of people from Whitman and Hanson there. It was so good to see the giant Whitman-Hanson family, all there, supporting a basketball team that probably in the history of the high school has never gone that far, and they were
The first time, as far as I know, yeah.
We were eight points ahead in the third period, everybody's going, "Yahoo, we're gonna win this one," and it just got away. They played fabulous, and we couldn't be any more proud of them, so thank you, Josh.
Thank you. We've started again.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I did want to also comment, I was fortunate to be able to go to the game last night, too, and although we would have liked the outcome to be different, the spirit of our fans, whether it was win or lose, was positive and upbeat. Ellen Stockdale and I were on the tee coming back, we felt like we were on the Panther train. It was absolutely wonderful. Now, I did say to Ellen at the beginning, "Maybe I should give the budget presentation while everyone's waiting here, I'll have the audience and they can hear it." But what a wonderful evening, and just want to thank Jeff Simonak, he and Bob Rogers did just yeoman's work to get things organized so everybody could go and do this, also at the middle school level, Bill and George as well, so just great spirit, it was a lot of fun. What we're gonna hear tonight, I don't have much of a report because we're gonna focus on the budget, but Pat Dillon has been working on employee benefits. We've been concerned about when there are disabilities, if an employer, employee needs to be out of work, how we handle that, and Pat has worked with Christine Suko, and he's gonna be talking to you tonight about the work that they've been doing.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Whitner. As Dr. Whitner said, one of my initial goals and tasking was to analyze the benefits of the district, you know, how we're supporting the employees in the district. So working with Christine and Kevin Kafka, we did our due diligence, and you know, we identified an opportunity to enhance the benefits without increasing the cost to the districts or the employees. So we met with a series of potential partners in that, and we ultimately landed on Boston Mutual and Life Plus. And essentially, the net of it is during open enrollment in April, this is an optional thing for employees, again, there's no, they choose to pay for it, but we're going to be offering short-term disability and long-term disability, and I'll give you an example where it's really relevant, you know, short-term disability, if we have a brand-new teacher in the district who's, you know, needs to get on, go on a maternity leave, maybe doesn't have a whole lot of sick time, this is a perfect opportunity to augment and help that person through that, through that life event. So I'm proud of the due diligence we did, and again, I can't thank Kevin and Christine enough. So again, we're gonna be offering short-term disability, long-term disability. The other thing we looked at is historically, employees come into the district and they're able to get $35,000 worth of life insurance, it's a one-time deal, and they can't exceed that. So we looked at that program, too, again, partnering with Boston Mutual and Life Plus, and I'll say that Boston Mutual works with approximately 100 municipalities and/or school districts in the state, so they're a reputable organization. Another enhancement to the benefits offering during April is employees will still be able to get that $35,000, but they'll be able to get supplemental insurance up to $750,000 and/or five times the salary, five times their salary. Again, it's, and it's, it's an additional cost to the employee, but it's an offering that just wasn't there. With the life insurance, we actually save about $4,000 as a district. The other thing, too, is the actual fees to the employees is less than what they're paying now, so there's some slight savings there. But again, I think, you know, the good story here is we're able to enhance the benefits for the staff while somewhat reducing the cost to the staff and the district in that offering, so barring any questions.
We thought it was important for you all to hear about the new opportunities that we're gonna have available.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pat. I think we're all set.
Okay, old business. FY 2016-2017 budget. As all of you know, this evening is the night that we have to vote the assessment. So just to recap kind of where we are with this, we have a $1,000,000, a $1,400,000 deficit for a level service funding. We're gonna have to take that up, but we also have a student success budget, which is a $3 million budget. Now, you've heard the term override. The school committee doesn't have the opportunity to put this forward as an override. This is something that the finance committees and the selectmen have to determine where the funding source is coming from. So after we determine how we're going to do the level service funding, what percentage of assessment that will be to the town, we have to take up the student success budget, see how we're going to have it intact or however it's going to be, and then we have to determine what the assessment on that will be at the number that it ends at, and then we have to put them together and vote it. So I want to be very clear, if at any particular time that we're doing this, there's any confusion from anyone on the board, please stop me as we go along, or if there's any questions, and then I'll take questions from anyone that's here, 'cause I know everybody's here for the same thing, and we want everybody to be clear about how this goes. At the end, I want to just remain factual with this point. The assessment that goes to the towns of Whitman and Hanson is not the assessment of what a budget is. If you had a 3% assessment on what we're going to do for level services and you had funding from somewhere else, $45 million budget, 3% would not equal that figure, so it has nothing to do with the total number on the budget. It has all to do with what the assessments are yearly to the towns to make our services, get our level service budget back to where it was. So having said that, I think everybody on the committee, I'm just recapping it again so we know where we are for this. Any questions? Let's have at it so there's no confusion. We have a $1.4 million deficit. Fred?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we take $750,000 from E and D toward the FY17 budget.
I have a motion?
Second.
Second, okay, we're gonna go into discussion. Everyone, excuse me, you've all received this particular paper. It's kind of a chart, obviously, and we're gonna be able to go right down it. If you look at, if you take the $750,000 out, which we have a motion for, and you have a $1.4 million gap, you have to make up the rest with the assessments to the town. That would equate to approximately 3.5%, I believe.
If you turn to this page, it's all
Yeah, if you go to the
The second page has everything on it.
Page two, it goes right down by points. So if you look at it, at 3.5%, that would bring us back to approximately perfect for level service. So if you took 750 out of E and D and you assessed the towns 3.5%, that would get the level service part of this budget back to level services, obviously. Are there any questions on that? Now, if you went to 4%, obviously, you can override your 4.5 or 5, if you look down the chart, you can read the numbers and see where it's, where it's heading. 3.5, the increase to Whitman would be $370,514, and the increase to Hanson would be $260,900. The reason for this, for anyone that's watching, is the per pupil enrollment, that's what the difference in the number. Whitman has more pupils, so it costs more, but that's the difference. It's never, you, I haven't seen it in years, sometimes Hanson pays, Whitman pays more, most of the time, one year it was Hanson paid more because of the swing in the enrollment. So if you look down on the, on the chart, you can see, does everybody see what I'm looking at? If you just go over to Whitman or Hanson, it's in green and blue, you can see what the difference is at 300, at 3.5%. Everybody see that? Kevin?
Yeah, not yet.
Any questions from anyone? Dan?
By going to the 750 amount, and let's say, to get in the total assessment, the student success doesn't go because the town doesn't do it, where does that put us exactly? Because these numbers are different than the book on the remaining budget.
Christine? Remaining budget, that would be the override amount?
That's correct. So if you look at where it says operating expenses, that's $3 million more than the level service, then the anticipated revenue includes the $750,000, if that's what you voted this evening to go out of E and D to balance the budget at level service. Then if you look at the remaining deficit, that's the 3 million plus the, minus the $750,000 'cause you took that out. So if you look, what Bob was saying, that if you look at the 3.5%, you go all the way over to the total, total remaining deficit, that's just over $3 million, which is the, this includes the student, that's the student's success budget.
Okay. Cap?
Christine, what's our E and D balance at the moment? 1, 3, 7, 5?
7, 0, 3, 10.
7, 0, 3, 10. Okay. So it looks like the first thing we were talking about was whether to take 800 or 750 out of that.
Fred made the motion of 750 rate at the present.
Thoughts on that, Fred, why 750 and not 8? Is there a particular?
3.5 seems to be a palatable number in my mind.
Okay.
Yeah, if you went to, if you look on the different, if you look at the top of the page, you'll see E and D, 750, E and D, 800, and that's what gives you the different charts.
Each one's 800.
See where I'm looking? Right here, if you look, it says E and D, that's with 750, E and D with 800. It'll give you different numbers to go by. But if you look at the
Can I just clarify that everyone knows a level service budget is not replacing library, community, system, language, any of the kinds of things with law?
Yeah, I think the important piece is to know that a level service budget does add some special ed services by law. Basically, it means we stand still. We don't move forward, but we don't move back. Lately, we've been moving back, so a level service budget is status quo, keeps us where we are, and as Mrs. Westfield said, we don't get library back, we don't increase, we don't improve class size, we don't improve professional development, none of those things happen. Next year at this time would look just like today. We stay where we are.
Ellie?
I have a question, and forgive me, I'm having an awful senior moment with remembering the actual wordage of it here. What was the amount that the state feels that the town should be?
Target share.
Target share, thank you. Where, I can't remember what the target shares were for the town, and where does the 3.5 get the towns to their target share? How far away are they? How close are they? Does anybody have those figures?
Really, go ahead, Christine, you can
It doesn't get to them.
It doesn't change anything.
It doesn't change anything, 'cause that's
Pretty much status quo.
Right, status quo is what it is.
The only way, the, the student success budget moves us to target, or close.
Well, I'd like to up the stakes a little bit. I'll stay with the 750, but we should be looking at a higher percentage, I would think. Are we moving in that direction, or are we content with 3.5%? I was looking more like a 5.5, 5, I don't know what's Discussion, Fred?
My feeling is we're gonna be looking at 20% or 20.5% as an assessment. We're just handling it and, we're breaking it down a little bit, it's going to ultimately be up to the fin coms and the, in the towns to decide exactly how they want to handle it, going under the assumption they're going to want to handle it on an override basis, but that'd be their decision, but I'm looking at a total assessment of 20.5%. I'm not looking at anything less than the student success budget in my mind. I'm just feeling we're taking one-time money, and what we can afford to take for one-time money with that 750, and sort of equate it to what we know in our minds, so to speak.
Ellie?
I understand what you're saying, Fred. My concern is if the overrides don't go through, again, the towns are only committing to 3.5%. They need to increase it. That's all they've ever committed to, generally 3% assessment, it needs to go up.
Well, if I, you know, you did say that's all they've ever committed to, and, you know, I don't want to be correcting you, but that's true for the last five years since the recession, five, six years. Prior to that, we typically got 4% and 5%. I think the towns were able to do a lot more before things really tightened up, but you're correct. And when we had a year, 2009, 2010 school year, the increase was zero. So you're not far off.
Right.
One obviously impacts the other. It's, it's really a case of where the committee wants to be, 'cause you're gonna be, Fred's right, you're at about 20% roughly with the student success budget. Now, just jumping forward just for a second. The towns have to separate the two, they're gonna do it that way, they're gonna come up with what their assessment is for level service budget. Then they're going to put a question on for the $3 million. We don't have the opportunity, 'cause we, again, I hate to be redundant, we can't tell them where to get their funding source from. They have to determine the funding source. They could up the ante, but they have to determine the funding source. We can always go down, we can never go up. I want to make that very clear also. So having said that, Sue, Kristen, and Phil.
Christine, what percentage would get us to our target share?
Well, the $3 million, it would be 20, 20.15% if you took money from E and D.
That would get us to our target?
Yeah, just a little bit over target.
It would be very close to what they're looking at. I mean, they recompute this every year, they take socioeconomics, growth factors, I mean, we don't want to blatantly say, yes, it would get us there, but it certainly moves us much closer to the target, and we could actually hit the target at that level.
And obviously, if you get the $3 million override, it builds the base.
Correct.
And then you get the 3 million plus 2.5% on the next year on top of it. Excuse me. So that's something, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead. I'll pass for the moment. I'll pass for the moment. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone in the gallery have any questions or comments? Okay, well, I have a motion for $750,000 from E and D and a 3.5% assessment. Well?
I would like to go to 5.5%.
You'd like to amend it?
I'd like to amend it if it's okay with the maker of the motion. And the reason, and the reason behind that is that, in the number of years that I've been on the committee, we've usually thrown out a figure anywhere between 4% and 5% in the past, and it's been whittled down to 3%, 3.25%. And personally, I think it's time to put the money that we need out there. If the town supports it, fine. If it doesn't, then there's nothing we can do about it. But our job is to educate children, build the best budget, the best budget that we can, be reasonable as we can, which I think we are, and then see if the town supports it. I may be overthinking it, but
Okay. Ruth? Then Fred?
You're only gonna be able to vote one assessment. This is just for planning purposes. So the towns could decide, you give them, say, a 20% increase in the assessment, they might decide to break it up differently. You're not really voting, you can only vote one assessment.
Right.
So this is really for planning purposes, so the vote is really on whether to take 3/4 of a million dollars from E and D, it's not to set any kind of an assessment at 3.5 or 3.25.
Okay, the reason I added 5.5 is it sounded like to me we're voting for
You can't. You can only vote one assessment increase, so, and that's according to, you know, about 20%. And then you take this to the towns, and they will look at it and determine what percentage they want to split is, to do that way.
But in the past, we've set a percentage.
Right, you're gonna do that again.
All right. Well, what we've done in the past, Bob, is we didn't have a student success budget.
I understand that.
So we weren't looking for
But it's one budget.
But it's going to be one budget.
It can only be one budget.
And they're gonna split it up.
You'll vote one budget number and one assessment, you can't vote two assessments.
All right, I'm a little confused. It doesn't make sense.
What, the motion was that
The motion was to take $750,000 out of E and D.
And that's it, no, no percentage.
No percentage.
Okay, I understand that. Fred?
If I could just make one comment, when the towns do decide how they split it up, if they said, geez, we'll give you 5, and then the balance goes to an override, et cetera, my fear would be, our needs are far greater than just 5%, and this is, this support in the community, in my feeling right now, to have a chance to have their voice heard and to make a vote. And God willing, with the support of the community, the student success budget does go through. And I would hate to see somebody go to a ballot box and say, "Well, geez, you know, instead of doing this, we're doing a little bit extra." And that's just sort of my mindset. But again, that's maybe off topic for this
I'm a little confused right now.
That's all right.
Well, I was gonna ask, 'cause now I am definitely confused. I, I didn't think I was last week, but now, now I am. So let me ask it this way. So we've got to come up with level service. Is that basically, we gotta come up with levels, what a level service is, and then what our assessment's gonna be?
No.
No.
These are really for thinking purposes.
Okay.
You basically will vote one assessment.
Right, right, which I get that, okay.
We know that with a 3.5% assessment increase and $750,000, we have a level service budget. We don't have to lay anyone off.
Okay.
And that's what we know, that's just a fact. So that's why that's there, so that you as a committee know that with that amount of money, we are exactly where we are next year, as we are this year. But we also know that doesn't really do much. It doesn't at least kick us back, we've been kicked back quite a bit, yeah. So it's really more for planning purposes at this point, but how it's funded, your control is really E and D at this point.
Follow?
But that 3.5% is planning purposes for us?
You know that if you get a 3.5%, if the town commits to 3.5% without, within the, within the levy limit, they may do that.
Okay.
You at least don't fall back, you stay the same. That's really what they, that's for their planning purpose.
It's more of a placeholder for them.
It's a placeholder to know that at least that, that's what, if they can do that within the levy limit, at least the district doesn't fall behind.
Okay.
And then we move forward, we're trying to get the additional 3 million.
Bob?
I'll pass to Susan.
Sue?
So basically, if we want to vote the student success budget, we need to vote a 20% assessment.
That is correct.
It's actually 20.15.
1.5.
1.5.
Okay.
It's 2, 0.15. Bob?
So the vote that we're gonna take in a moment is for taking out the $750,000.
Yes.
Then
With the assessment.
Then the assessment.
Then the assessment, right.
So basically, if we do the 750 for the E and D, we go to the town floor, even though we're asking for 20, but they bump us down, we can't go below 3.5, is what this chart's saying? Because then we wouldn't
No, no.
No. Go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I know, but I just want town to do
This might be inscrutable to people listening, but every year, we have a chart, line by line of what each percentage increase would cost each town and how much it raises our budget by. We always have a highlighted portion, which is, this is where we are now.
That's right.
That's all it tells you, is this is where we are now. So the highlighted 3.5% is just, that's, that's, that's maintaining what we're getting.
Level service.
That doesn't mean that's the target, that doesn't mean this is what we're assessing at, it just means if things are to stay as they are, it's, you can anticipate a 3.5% assessment, if you're assuming that everything's gonna stay the same going to next year. It has nothing to do with the number you choose to assess, you could go lower, higher, and anything and everything, basically.
Exactly. Everybody understand that? 'Cause this year with the student success budget makes things a little bit different. Because the town, again, and I tried to get this out at the beginning, is going to split it, because they're going to have to go to an override. If we vote a 20.15, the towns are not gonna be able to fund that within the levy limit, they're going to make their determination, 'cause they know where their funding sources come from. We can't tell them where their funding source is gonna be. I mean, in a perfect world, it'd be nice for them to say, "Oh, well, okay, we'll just do that without an override," but we know that that's a fantasy. The towns don't have that type of money.
And ultimately, it's a question of what town meeting decides.
Exactly.
If that line is voted by the town meeting.
No, that's what I mean, that's why I'm assured we're not gonna
Presumably, everybody's gonna be there.
Exactly. So, yeah, go ahead, Doug.
If we vote the 20% and it doesn't pass town meeting, is it all or nothing? Or can it be
No, they're gonna separate it.
They're gonna look at what they can do within the levy limit and what exceeds the levy limit.
So they can disagree on the 20 and still back it up to 3, 4, whatever.
Yes.
Correct.
You can always vote it down.
They want 20, they want this, that's what's gonna happen.
Right. Now, to give you
I've got a question.
Just
Peggy, come on up. Is it possible that things go below 3.5%?
Peggy, come up, 'cause some of us are having trouble hearing you.
People at home.
I'm talking about the people at home, Peggy, I've never had any trouble hearing you.
I know. Peggy Westfield, State Street, Hanson, is it possible that the selectmen in either or both towns could go below the 3.5% and would end up in worse shape than we are now?
There's any possibility, town meeting?
Okay, I just want everybody to know that, that that's
Anything can happen, you're talking about town meeting first, then you're talking about going to a ballot for the rest. I was just gonna go to the student success part of this chart to try and kind of explain to people where we're going, but Peggy, you're totally correct, and that's what I said, we can't go up. We can only go down. They can do whatever they want, but the weird part about...
So we should reach for the stars.
3.5%.
It's also that way every year.
Right. So if you voted a 20.15%, it would equate to a tax impact in the town of Whitman of $1.24 per $1,000 assessment on your house, per year. So if you had an average home value of $270,940 in Whitman, which is the average home value, it would, on a single residential family home, it would cost the average taxpayer $336. If you had a $450,000 valuation, it would cost you $558. In the town of Hanson, the impact would be $1.13 per thousand. The average home value in Hanson is $292,500, which would equate to $331 extra on your tax bill. If you had a $450,000 home in Hanson, it would equate to $509 on your tax bill. So it's a 1.24 in Whitman, $1.24 per thousand. That's the key. You know, a lot of people might say, well, that's cheap enough. It's per thousand on what your house is valued at, and it's $1.13 per thousand in the town of Hanson. That would be on an assessment of 20.15.
With an E and D of $750,000?
Yeah, with the E and D, that's, I've got a motion and a second on already. That would be taking out the $750,000 from E and D. Now, there's advantages and disadvantages. There's advantages and disadvantages. Some might say, take more out of E and D and lessen the impact. Or take less out of E and D in case it doesn't go through, then you could take some out of E and D and maybe replace something that you're losing. So there's both sides of that coin, and I know this is confusing because it's different sides of the table, but it's how it works. It's how town government works. It's how a regional school district has to work. If you were in a district that wasn't a region, the selectmen set the budget for the school district at town meeting. Regional school districts do exactly what we're doing right now. We set the assessment and send it and hope it gets voted.
My only concern is, over the last couple of years, we've shown good faith in taking money out of our E and D accounts. And I was not really happy sometimes with the finance committee's support. So I'm hoping that there is a change. I know we have a large group here, SOS group, that, I mean, it makes sense, obviously, to go to the top to the 20.1%. But I'm just a little concerned, I know, did you meet, I was out of town last week. Did you meet with the finance committee? Was there any indication as to where their support may lie, or they were kind of non-committal?
They were both a little bit in the committal, and they've got department head budgets coming in. I know a bunch went to Whitman, I can't remember who exactly, but it doesn't matter. And they were at 3%.
Mike's here.
What?
I see some finance committee members.
You do?
Nice one.
Hi, Mike.
So they've been 3% over, like, over the last couple of years, it's been 3%?
Yes.
That's right.
Probably the last five years.
We had six once.
Yeah.
And we got two also.
Yeah, we were at 4.5, and we ended up with two.
Everywhere.
And did you get, I get the same feeling. Christine, you were with me in Hanson. They were saying the same thing, 3%.
Then I guess what we need to do is to make sure that the support that's here this evening comes to town hall, town meeting, and regardless of what the finance committee may recommend, to vote for the 20%.
The key is really in the support. You're 150% correct.
Because on the Whitman side, 150 people that you struggle to get in there, we'll vote this down in the back. So you're going to have to get a few hundred people in there to vote it in.
Well, also, but as it gets split, Dan, that does matter, but as it gets split up, let's just, I'm going to use scenarios. Here again, I want everybody to understand, these are scenarios. They're going to split it into one line item and then another line contingent on an override to go to the voters anyway. Does everybody understand that? It's going to be split, so the decision will ultimately be, whatever they decide for the assessment on the level service side, what they take out of it, and then the $3 million, if we leave that intact as a student success budget, will be the override question. Both towns have already said it will go to an override. So does everyone understand that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Could the amount be amended on town meeting floor? Let's say the finance committee's now with X amount of dollars. Can someone amend that figure on town floor?
You can, it can be amended.
Okay.
Any of this is subject to change, but the key is exactly what Mr. Trotter said, support. It's the key. Any other questions? Come on forward. Come forward, please. We're trying to get it so everybody can hear you. We have people at home that say, when you let them speak from the audience, you can't hear them.
No problem. Mike McKenna, Whitman. Superintendent, we're talking about support, and you're the face of the school district, and I'm just wondering, what's your plan for rallying, rallying the troops, I guess, is my question?
Absolutely.
You know, we have a strong mobile unit at the Conley PAC, and I just want to see what your plan is to help rally the other schools and to get everybody there.
Well, this evening, we have all of our building principals here. We have members of our leadership team. We have school committee members. Everybody here has a circle of influence. So we are going to be working on our circles of influence. We have found that doing shows on cable helps tremendously. We've also found that site-based meetings are much more helpful than one large meeting in the PAC, and that's been very effective at getting the word out to everybody. I think first and foremost, by defining it as a student success budget, we've given it a focus that we've never given before. What we've done in the past, if we've put our budget into school committee, it's been up by about the same amount as this, you know, $48, $49 million. And then we spend late winter and early spring, cutting, 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 and then we do things like eliminate the library program, and people don't notice. So what we've done this year is call it what it is, and we've aligned it with what people believe. We did a survey of the entire district of stakeholders, what really matters. We listened to our leadership team, what really matters. I think you've got many, many people who are going to follow the leadership, myself and central office, our leadership team principals, to move forward with this. We cannot move back. We can't even stand still. We've got to move forward. So we need every single person here. We need all the people you know. As a superintendent and as people who work in a district, we have to be very careful about how political we can be. We can't use district facilities to run off flyers or do T-shirts, so we have to rely on the parent support groups to do a lot. We certainly are allowed to advocate for it, and you will hear us advocating all over the place.
Yeah, I think that, you know, having your face out there at Sunday breakfast places, at different community events might be...
Well, I think it's more than just me. It's got to be...
Oh, I agree.
...the entire team, because we all have our own groups, and we certainly have a wonderful team that worked at putting together that student success budget.
Okay.
But that's what it takes, and it's going to be a very busy two months.
Thank you.
Also, to further answer Mr. McKenna's question, the committee and different members of this committee have been to both finance committee boards and talked to them at length about what the student success budget is, what every piece of it is. And one of the questions was, and it was, I thought it was a good question, how do we come up with the student success budget? Where did it come from? How did you get here? And the answer to that was, and I think you were with me, Christine, was...
That's right.
We have a leadership team, a very, very close-knit group of leaders, being principals and department heads, that spent hours and hours and hours looking at what a student success budget would be, what we need in this district to move forward, how we're going to move forward with this 21st century education. And they were like, that's great. And they really kind of wanted that type of an answer. Because lots of times, and I'm going to just be as guilty as the rest, we get talking about it, but we're used to doing it. We're used to talking about all the different things that go on, and it leaves some people saying, what are they talking about? You know, when we start talking OPEB or anything, we're talking stuff that we're talking about it all the time, but people, we have to slow down at times. And this committee has been spending a lot of time doing that. But what the superintendent has said is, every person in this group, you've heard of the old story of you talk to 10, who talked to 5, who've talked to 5 more, and that's how you end up? Well, if you looked at the Whitman-Hanson family that was at the basketball game last night, you'd see how 2,000 of them got there, and they got there by going, this one to that one to this one to this neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood with eight houses. I've already worked on the other seven. Telling them what's going on. At their door, telling them, I can't be more important than this. This is one of the most important things you have to do. Take nothing for granted. Knock on doors. Tell these people what this means to you. That's how we got you here. You guys formed a group because you were interested in student success. There's never this many people in the gallery. I couldn't be more proud of everybody who's sitting out here right now. But it's your charge, just like it is our charge. You're all part of a community, and if it's important to you, as it is important to us, this will happen. Sure?
Sean K. in Florida Street. I think support is definitely important, but I also think research is key. If we look at the, there are three reasons why I think we should support the override and the assessment that you're looking to set it at. First, I think if you look at the average tax bill in Whitman and Hanson, it's below average, which is something that's often not discussed, but I think it's an important variable. The tax bill in Whitman and Hanson is below average, but the median income in both Whitman and Hanson is above average. So it's a pretty good indication that we have some money, that we're not overtaxing the people of Whitman and Hanson. And the target chair speaks to that as well. We talked about that last week. You know, I think if we're going to the people, and we said we need money for an override, but the target chair said we were supporting more than we should, then we wouldn't have the evidence, really, to support that. But I think with those things in mind, I think it's a pretty good indication that we're not overtaxed as a community. Also, I think investing in education is a good long-term investment. A full-day kindergarten. The research from economists say, for every $1 that you invest, you get $3 back, because less kids drop out of school, there's less remediation, those sorts of things. With substance abuse, research-based substance abuse programs with social workers and adjustment counselors, this is, economists say that for every $1 that you invest, you get $7 back, because there's less treatment, there's less ambulance care, those sorts of things. And then we talked about property values. Economists say that for every $1 you invest in public education, you can get as much as $20 back on your home value. So investing in quality education is good. It's an asset, it's not a liability. It really makes sense. And the third reason, and this is the one, for me, I feel most strongly about, we look at people who struggle to pay their bills, and they have a family, and they have children in the school district. The research says that a child who goes to school, and if they don't have access to full-day kindergarten, and if they don't have access to an adjustment counselor in the elementary school, they don't have access to the foreign language in middle school, and they don't have access to, like, the 21st century skills in high school, and the class size is too high, they don't build up the skills to do well in college, the research says that they're more apt to stay in the low-income bracket. Whereas if the opposite, if you do fund all those things, statistically, they're as apt to be wealthy as anybody else in the community. So for me, that's, this is like, speaks to who we are as citizens. We should support an equal school, a school system that supports equality, not the haves and the have-nots that you talked about last weekend, last week, but a quality school system that any kid can go to school, work hard, go to college, be who he wants to be. So please consider the research, and we'll be working our butts off for the support, but really, we want the override. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have a motion in a second to take $750,000 out of E and D.
That was amended, though. It was amended in a second.
No, no.
No, I was misinformed.
We were taking...
Right, no, I know, but there was an assessment number thrown, and I just wanted to make sure.
Right, $750,000.
We're voting on the proper thing.
So I have a motion in a second to take $750,000 out of E and D, and it's going to leave approximately 670 in there?
Uh, 620. 620.
620.
So, any further discussion about the first part of the E and D? Motion is $750,000. It's going to leave a balance of $620,000. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Now, the second piece is the total assessment.
I'd like to make a motion to have a total assessment of 20.15%.
Second.
Can't let this go without some discussion. I was going to... I mean, it's not going to happen.
Well, I think everyone is, you know, is in unison as to what we need as a school system. I've been here a few years, there's a few others that have been a few years, and it's, I mean, I feel really kind of energetic that this could actually get done. So I'm very hopeful. I'm looking forward to a great turnout at town meeting, and hopefully, we'll get this done once and for all, and start to move forward. So I'm 100% on the 20.1%.
Well, I echo that exact same sentiment. We've been pushing this. We've spent a lot of time with different boards discussing this. I think everybody's input tonight was great. I think everybody is basically on the same page, and I feel energized, as Bob said. I know we have a fabulous leadership team. I know every one of them personally, and they did a great job on the student success budget. It's the beginning of moving forward again, if we get this voted in the positive. This district has always been a very good school district. People love these two towns, and I think it's important that we try to get this through. So is there any further discussion?
If I could just add one thing, is to kind of top off what Sean had to say about kindergarten. Kindergarten's proven to be the nucleus. In other words, you get, make it accessible to everybody, so no one has to pay, it becomes, everyone gets there, and I think that's where you start your success base, and it moves up through. So to have full-day kindergarten, I think is a necessity today. So I'm just hopeful that we get the deal done.
Mr. Evans? Come right up, Mr. Evans.
I'm going to be brief. Can you give us...
You've never been brief. Come on up. It's always good to see you, Mr. Evans. Thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tom Evans, 68 Temple Street. Mr. Chairman, could you give us a list briefly of the things you plan on putting back that's included in that 20.15? Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Do I read them all?
Yeah.
Okay. Class size reduction. It would add eight teachers to reduce class size in the elementary schools. Implementation of full-day kindergarten at no cost for all students. Restore the library program. It would pay for the elementary science curriculum. Currently, that's grant-funded, so the funding is not something that's guaranteed. It would add instructional materials. We have aging materials, textbooks in some cases that go back to the 1990s. It would add two social workers. It would add two reading specialists.
Excuse me, one second for interrupting. Can you explain the social worker aspect of this? Because this...
Oh, I've got people here that could do an even better job than I do.
But the reason I'm asking is not just social media, but walking through shaws, people will say, "What are we doing with this in a school district? This is not the school's problem." Can you explain to them why it is appropriate?
We have seen over time an increase in the number of low-income students and students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. We've seen increased problems of students who are from families that are not functioning in ways that really support students. Students are coming to school with issues and problems that 20, 25 years ago, we would have never thought possible. This year, we do have a, through the Behavioral Health Grant Initiative, which is part of North River Collaborative, very part-time social workers in our elementary schools right now. And I'd love to have one of our building principals who would like to get up and talk and tell us why that's important, because you're there at ground level. So anyone who feels motivated, I'd love to hear you talk about why it matters. Julie, come on up. And anyone else who wants to chime in, that would be great.
Julie McKillop, I'm the principal of the Duval School. I feel very strongly we need social workers in our schools. I can tell you, just at the Duval School, and certainly I don't want to go into any confidentiality information, but I can tell you since June, I have 16 kids at least that have changed custody. Those children need to be supported throughout their day. That doesn't shut off for those kids at 9:00, when the school day starts, and then start back up at 3:00. They need a social worker, someone who is a professional that can support them, so that they can worry about the basics of life, so then they can learn their ABCs. So I think that social workers are so critical. Right now, we do have a part-time social worker, and she is phenomenal. But I hope whoever's having the problem, and they have it on Wednesdays, because that's the day she's there. So to have this additional help, it's a start. It's what we need. And we cannot do our jobs anymore without a social worker. We have one school psychologist, Colleen McDonald, and everybody else at the elementary has one. They're the people who are sped testing, adjustment counselors, and helping those families with social work. One person can't do that job. And each of our buildings are the same way at the elementary schools. So I really hope social workers are something that need to be supported. And since I'm here, so does full-day, because those same kids are going into half-day programs. They're starting their school career behind the eight ball. They're not even getting what everybody else is getting. So social workers and full-day kindergarten are two pieces we can't live without. I'm sure many of you here that now the hubbub in federal government is that we're going to start worrying about full-day preschool for everybody. We haven't even done full-day kindergarten yet. So we really need to get caught up and have these kids have what everybody else has as they start their career. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else from elementary who wants to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, well, let's hear elementary print. Karen, thanks.
I want to add just a couple of facts as well. I share the social worker with Duval Schools, so our kids have problems on Mondays and a half-day on Wednesday. But we have, we're into double digits with children who are DCF-involved. We have, I think when we did a quick survey of...
Karen, please, just because people...
Department of Children and Families. Department of Children and Families, so students who have been filed on for neglect or with either the school or with a neighbor, somehow it always comes back to school. So we're in double digits for that, which is, it far exceeds any number that we've had. Our, the counseling cases, Bethany Fitzroy is the social worker who works in our building a day and a half a week. She goes from the second she arrives until the time she leaves, and lots of times in between, she's available by email or phone. She has done a phenomenal job at connecting our families, families who may be disengaged in other ways. And I know that you hear a lot about the opioid crisis and all of those issues that we have with drugs in our communities, but that starts with these kids who we can't reach. We had two cases that we took to court last year for tardies and absences. Those are all things that a social worker can help us to keep kids engaged and keep them, get them to want to come to school and know that somebody cares about them, because we're asking kids to do things. And I think every parent who has a kindergarten or a first grader understands that our kids are doing things that we never did as kids, but we're asking these kids to do it, and they're coming with a lot of emotional baggage. You can't ask kids to do things like add, multiply, read, when they're worried about who's at home, who's taking care of me, did I eat breakfast? So school's a different place than it was several years ago, and these kids need this support. We need that support as well to help these kids, so.
Thank you, Karen.
John, mention.
I know last year, we spent a lot of time talking about this building and the transition room that we built in this building specifically for kids coming out of hospitals and psychiatric hospitals, back into the building and bridge the gap back, back here into this building. And I just wonder how many of those kids would have been prevented if we had social workers at the elementary level and caught them at an earlier age to prevent it in the first place. And so that's the pitch that I want to make.
Great, thank you.
Sue?
Social workers can also help consult with the teachers. Teachers don't need to be there to teach, not teach slash counsel. So the social workers really need to be in the schools. And also, if students have emotional difficulties, problems, they're not going to be able to learn. So you need to get them to a certain place so they can learn. It's really a great need.
I echo your sentiments, Susan. Elaine White, Indian Head Principal. In addition to what the other principals have said, our kids at the elementary level have anxiety. I've had kids that have been hospitalized. We have depression. I think the other thing, Dr. Queely, what you said is, we lost adjustment counselors in 2007, I think, at the elementary level. Those kids are now in high school. And I do echo your sentiments, that if we had caught them earlier, I think you build a strong foundation so that when children come to elementary school, you cement those wonderful, good habits of attendance and all of those things about doing homework and loving school and reading at night. You cement those at an early level so kids get into the habit of doing them. You don't try to be reactive when they get to middle school and have an adjustment counselor. So all of those services that we lost, I think we're reaping the benefits or the problems now because here we have kids in high school that are unable to function. So I do think we see the same things in Hansen as we do in Whitman, and we certainly need a social worker in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other principals?
Okay, okay.
Come on up.
Yep. All right, Donna. Here she comes. Might as well.
I basically just would reiterate what the others said. We've never had such a high free and reduced lunch number count, which just shows you again the economic challenges that families are facing. In addition to that, I know when we were talking as part of our leadership team, we mentioned how many children are being raised by grandparents. They're not seeing their parents, or they've been taken from their parents for different reasons. So these are the things that we are dealing with on a daily basis, when our time should be spent, obviously, doing a lot of other things. But these are so important that we're having to step in where a social worker would have in the past. So it is really critical at this point.
Thank you, Donna.
Good evening. Bill Trant, Ants Middle School Principal. One of the things I kind of want to bring this back, that this isn't about just kids who are in DCF, free and reduced lunches, low income. This is about all kids. And we're seeing in the middle schools, the results of the elementary schools not having the mental health support. Our adjustment counselor and guidance counselors, Mr. Ferro and I were just talking, are out straight trying to deal with issues. We've had several students this year hospitalized for a variety of mental health issues. We have students who cut. We have students who threaten to commit suicide. We have students who have severe anxiety and don't want to come to school. We're dealing with all of those issues and trying to educate these students. It's about the social, emotional well-being of our students, not about what their income level is and whether or not they get lunch, free and reduced lunch or not. So it's not an income issue. I want people to understand it's about all kids and about everybody's well-being.
George Ferro, Middle School, couldn't agree more with what everybody said. But I think it's also important that this is an opportunity to be proactive as opposed to reactive. So we talk about social, emotional learning. There's a massive task force right now going on at the state level, Rennie Center, John Dioria, Teachers 21, the groups I'm with, the elementary groups, which is now saying, "Hey, this is where students are at in this day and age." So we want to make sure that they have the skills that they need to be successful, so that they can deal with academics that are now at a different level, so that they can deal with peer relations that are now at a different level, so that we can deal with social media that's now at a different level. Because it's all about, what do we give, what tools are we providing with students, K to 12, to then increase their social, emotional learning and their social, emotional awareness? Like, I look like a moron tonight. I get that. I'm wearing my T-shirt. Because we had an issue, we had an assembly today that talked all about where are kids at, and how do we help kids? So part of this, and part of the reason why elementaries are talking, middle schools are talking, I'm sure Mr. Simonak can echo, is because that we're taking kids from every walk of life, from every piece of life, from every socioeconomic group, but it's incumbent upon us as educators to then say, "Take them where they're at. Give them the skills that they need to succeed, not only in first grade, fifth grade, ninth grade, but then for the rest of their life." So I think that's part of why this is so important, and this student success budget is so important. This is what I wanted to say.
Jeff Simonak at the high school, how do I follow that? But I can't agree with George more, the other principals. I'm the endgame, and I see what we haven't supported. I've been here six years. There is now a gap of kids from the elementaries and the middles that haven't, have had their basic needs in that. I had a school council meeting tonight, and back in the day, there were mass specialists, and there were people to help with the academic piece. We don't have guidance counselors, we don't have adjustment counselors, we don't have social workers in the elementary school. And I'm seeing the fact, and what John said before, with social, emotional issues at high school. And where do they go from here? Because my job is to make sure they graduate, and if they don't graduate, the district gets whacked, saying that you don't, your graduation rate isn't there, and now your education system isn't what it should be. We have the opportunity here to make sure it's for all kids. It's the kid that struggles in the elementary, it's the kid that struggles in the ninth grade. We do a great job. I'm lucky enough, I have adjustment counselors. We have a grant we've applied for to work with at-risk kids. But a lot of our kids are at risk, but they don't have the support K to 8. And when they come up here, they struggle with their academics, which leads to poor peer relations, which leads to the student who's next to this student who's not able to learn effectively if this student A was given some supports at the elementary. So the whole thing, and kindergarten, I'm the high school principal, full-day K would be awesome, because our students would get shielded blocks all the way through. We do less remediation, and we beat that cutting at school in 12 years. So thank you much. Please support that.
That leadership team's going to be a tough act to follow. Come on up.
Lila Donovan, 81, Old Mansion Lane. I am a Conley mom, and I am a social worker who practices in Whitman. And all that time I was standing there, I was trying to count the elementary school kids that I see, and the middle school, and the high school kids, and I couldn't. I've only been in practice for two years, and it's at least 25. And I've worked with a lot of kids who try to succeed in the awesome programs that you have here at the high school, Dr. Queely, and there's so many options and so many great things that they can do. But like you said, Mr. Simonak, I have first graders who brought, their mom brought them to me because a first grader said, "Mom, I want to kill myself." How do you expect that first grader to focus on math, or reading, or anything else that she has to do? And here I am, reaching out to the teachers, one of the other principals said it, and I'm asking the teachers now to monitor what's going on, and can you try to do this for little Susie, and do you think we can do that? The teachers can't handle that. They're not equipped, like I think it was you that said that. The teachers aren't equipped to do these things. We're asking them to do things that are not appropriate. It's not healthy. We need social workers. I need someone to communicate with for these little ones, so that they can get the help that they need and concentrate in school and do what we're asking them to do. It's not healthy. It's not appropriate. It's not safe.
Thank you.
Kara Moser, 41, Hammond Road in Hansen. And so those of you that know me, I'll talk to a bunch of fourth graders all day, but I hate being up in front of adults, so bear with me. I'm also, as I alluded to, a fourth-grade teacher in another district. I'm currently reading my fourth-grade students as a read aloud for a book that I kind of, that I consider a classic. There's a Boy in the Girl's Bathroom. I don't know how many of you have read that. It is a Lewis Sackar book, and one of the big themes of that book is a child who is troubled, who goes to see their social worker at school. And an underlying theme is the hubbub in the community because there's a social worker employed by the schools. And why, why is there a social worker in the schools, and what's the need for that? And obviously, you know, as you would imagine, the moral at the end of the story is that this social worker was a changing life force in this child. So I just decided, as we were talking, to look up when that book was published. And it was published in 1987. So this is a conversation that was happening 30 years ago, when I was in elementary school. And the school that we teach in today is so completely different than the school that I taught in when I started teaching, and it's 180 degrees different than the school that we went to as kids. And I think that it's very difficult to, for people to shift their paradigm and think about what school is like today. It is not the school we grew up in, on so many different levels. The expectations of these kids, the academic demands on these kids, the outside demands on these kids, that Mr. Ferro especially alluded to, it's a different world. And on top of that, our education, our model of education, especially as it relates to inclusivity, is very different than when we were in school. And we bring in children from a broad range of backgrounds, and the model is to be as inclusive as possible, as least restrictive as possible. So we have children who are in our classrooms, who have significant disabilities, who have social, emotional needs, who have autism spectrum disorders, things that are in a regular ed classroom and need to be accommodated. In addition to that, we have children who come from outstanding homes with very supportive, loving parents, who still struggle with mental health issues, with anxiety, with depression, as everybody has alluded to here. It's not just the poor kids. It's not just the kids who come from broken homes. It's kids from all walks of life. And so to think that this was an argument that was happening in 1987, and it's an argument that now we're having in 2016, like, the irony to me is astounding. And I think that that applies to so many of the elements of the student success budget. I think that, and it's hard unless you are living and breathing that world every day, to know how crucial each one of those elements are. Any one of those elements alone, I wouldn't dare take out of this budget. And I keep going back, and as Shaun was speaking, I was thinking, you know, I'm obviously most concerned about my own three children. You know, they're my primary concern. But at the end of the day, I'm also concerned about the children of this district. And that, you know, we are, I go back to, we're part of the commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we need, I think that that's a word that sometimes we toss around and don't really think about what the commonwealth means. And I think that means that we are responsible, we have a responsibility to all of the children in our communities. And I think it's really, really critical that we don't lose sight of that. Just because something may not affect your child does not mean it doesn't affect your family and your community and the commonwealth. So I just really cannot say enough how important all of that is. So, thank you.
Well, one of the reasons I stopped Ruth is because I'd been stopped by a lot of different people to talk about why we have this in schools. Why do we have it in a budget? That was absolutely perfect. 21st century learning is much different than it was, but it was brought up in the 80s because people recognized it, saw that it was happening, and moved towards it. And this education's much different today than it was then. So that's why I stopped her. I thought it was important for anybody that might be viewing to get a good idea of why this student success budget is where it is and why we asked for what we did. And I thank the leadership team dearly for doing that.
After hearing all that testimony, as many of you know, I taught in the public schools for a number of years, and it really warms my heart to be here, the enthusiasm of the administrators, the social workers, and teachers. I think teaching is still the greatest profession in the world, very, very difficult, a lot more difficult than when I was in there. When I was in there, you could see the changes coming. It's a lot more difficult now. I think the public schools were made, as the last woman I just said, for everybody, and we should give them as many resources as possible. We know there's an assault on public schools. We have to be very careful and make sure that our public schools are to the highest standard possible. that our public schools are to the highest standard possible. And, I just want to applaud those people that work in the school.[604.12][604.12](applause)
Mr. Small and Mr. O'Brien?
And, Mr. Trotter was a pretty good teacher, if I remember correctly.[613.41][613.41](laughter) I had him in sixth grade.[615.82][615.82](laughter)
Thank you, Fred.[618.12][618.12](laughter)
I think one thing that is absolutely imperative is to share with your friends, your neighbors, your community, the differences in what school is today compared to what it was 10 years, 15 years ago, or when you went to school, or they went to school. Because, it's changed so, so much. The classes are different, what the kids are learning today is so different. And, I think that's something that's hard for the average person to even comprehend. I know one of the things I did, Ruth was nice enough to take me on a tour of all of our schools, and we popped our heads in the classrooms and got to see what was going on. And, I was amazed, you know, not only at the level of achievement of our students, but as to what the expectations were at their young ages. And, I don't know that, you know, someone's sitting at home, they've raised their kids, they don't have any quote-unquote "skin in the game" right now, perhaps, but it's still important, and there's an ethical obligation to support education and to support the community. And, please, share that with everyone. You guys are on the front lines with your students, you're there with your kids, you know what's going on in their lives. Share it with everybody else. We need to get this done.
Robbie?
Just on a personal level, many of you know that we took in two foster kids back in July. And, first, I'd like to thank Mrs. Murphy and the McQuan staff, because they've literally bent over backwards even before we took them in, because the kids were actually at McQuan last year. And, then, Mr. Trantor and his middle school staff, because it's a huge adjustment for my son, for 12 years being an only child, to all of a sudden have a brother and sister in the mix. But, if you knew their background and their story, it really is heartbreaking. And, just for the longest time, the only thing they had that seemed to be a consistency was the McQuan school, and the staff that was there. And, really, it's, it is interesting, especially with one of them, joined at the hip with her teachers. I mean, absolutely loves it. And, Mrs. Collins made sure that, when she was coming back to full-day preschool, that she was able to literally juggle things around so that this, so that she could do that. And, that really, adjustment-wise, coping mechanism-wise, things like that, made a huge, huge difference. Huge difference for these two kids. And, you know, I think they're adjusting very well. It's still, you know, there's still struggles and things like that that go on, as they don't, you know, and they can tell you about. But, I mean, really, in my job as a firefighter and a paramedic, we see a lot of things that go on, we deal with a lot of kids, with stuff that we never dealt with before. I'm fortunate enough also, I get to go one of the Hanson schools all the time, and like I've always said, I could never be a school teacher. God love you for being a school teacher. I love going in the classrooms and kidding around with the kids, but when I was in there last week, the kids went out of control, I guess.[807.82][807.82](laughter) But, I mean, you know, it really is, it is a very, very tough profession, because teachers now, no longer are just teachers. They're teachers, they've become parents to a lot of kids, they've become social workers, licensed or not, they've become social workers and things like that, and it's huge. So, just on a personal level, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, Ruth, but I thought it was important for anybody watching to understand why we need social workers.
And, I think, you know, underlying all of it is it's our charge to make sure that all our students are available for learning. And, clearly, adding counselors, social workers begins to ensure that will happen. Also, in the student success budget, are adding specialists in reading and mathematics at the middle, at the middle school level. We haven't had that in a long time, the stakes are very high, they need to have strong reading and math skills. These are positions we haven't had and we sorely need. Increase in professional development. And, an interesting statistic is that the state average is that expenditures of $217 per pupil for professional development, we spend 35. So, we've used grants, we've used just ingenuity, a variety of things, but clearly, to have high-quality instruction, we need high-quality professional development. Also, the addition of a data specialist. We are bombarded with data, with information, and we have had to use pieces of people to do this, we have tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. We would add a data specialist. Foreign languages have been severely cut in the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District over the years. You've heard me say, when I came here in the mid-'90s, we had Latin, French, and Spanish at the middle schools. We even went through a period of time around 2007, 2008, where we had no foreign language in the middle schools, and now we have one Spanish teacher each, clearly inadequate for what students need for 21st century skills. We would add teachers in art, music, and wellness at the elementary level. This would provide much more enrichment for our students, also many opportunities for them to really want to come to school and to express creativity, to become physically fit. We would also add a fine arts position at the high school. We have two art teachers for 1,200 students. We have students who are unable to get the courses because we don't have enough instructors. We would also add a music teacher at the high school. Some of you remember Tom Oliveri. His position was eliminated in, he retired in 2007. We tried to hire someone, the money wasn't there, that position's remained unfilled since 2007. In terms of safety and security, it's an ongoing issue with all of us to ensure that our cameras are where they need to be, that doors are working. That budget keeps getting cut, that needs to be replenished. In addition to that, we're looking at programs such as Be Safe. Pat, maybe you could give a little quick overview as to what that is.
Yeah, so, Be Safe is a program that, it's, the CEO of the company is a former superintendent. And, essentially, what it does is it gives our first responder counterparts additional information about the buildings and stuff. So, an example is, if there were an event in the building, remotely, they could get information about what each particular room that maybe they're concerned about, or whatever, how it's set up, things like that. Emergency shut-offs, mechanical, you know, valves and stuff, where they're located. If, you know, a lot of the first responders have mutual aid, so, you know, if there was an event where other towns needed to respond, this program is an easy program for them to access and provide the information that they need for buildings. The example they use is, you know, you could actually, working with a responding emergency services, paramedic, ambulance-type situation, you could direct them to a specific door. Right now, you know, we can't do that across the district, but this program kind of organizes it, and it's a, it also has a facilities portion to it, so, Ernie Sandlin, it would help him manage it. But, the company's in several thousand schools and municipalities across the state. I believe the junior colleges, Cape Cod, Four Seas, all those schools, Be Safe is in that. I think Mass Maritime, Barnstable, and it's not, I mean, you know, it's money, but, you know, it's not, it's not a high-cost product, but the value of it is pretty significant. So, we're partnering with the respective chiefs of police and trying to figure out, you know, its application here, so.
Good. Thank you, Pat.
Yep.
In addition to that, we would add district security. We've cut that over the years, that clearly that's something that needs to be included. And, lastly, would be additional duty aides for the safety of students while they're outdoors playing and making sure students are being well-supervised. That comes out to the $3 million.
Everybody have a pretty good overview of where that student success budget came from? You heard from all the stakeholders this evening, the leadership team, who, believe me when I tell you, they put in countless hours coming up with this. So, it bears fruit to go over these things for anybody that might be watching that's not here, to understand where this $3 million figure came from. It just didn't, it wasn't a pie-in-the-sky figure, it wasn't a wish list, it was a well-thought-out list of what we need. We could use more, believe me. There were more things that come up. I see all the administrators looking, shaking their head, there were much more. This was a bare-bones get-start, let's get to where we need to be, and get the ball rolling, and see what we can restore in the Whitman Regional School District, so.
Thank you.
I think that they did a fabulous job, and I commend all of them.
Bob, a reminder, it's online.
It is online.
Yes. You can look online and find it.
Right.
If anybody, and if anybody watching, or anybody here, has any questions about anything to do with the student success budget, you see the full leadership team here, which are all the principals, you see all of your school committee members, anyone, you can call the district and you can ask questions. Questions shouldn't go unanswered. Unanswered questions become problematic. People want answers, nobody's hiding anything, we hear that word transparency, we couldn't be any more transparent. We want to help students. How do you help students? By helping educate the public on what this budget consists of. That's why we're here tonight. Thank you all for coming. Any other discussion on the, I have a motion on the floor for 20.15 as the assessment. Any further discussion? Just one more time, I want the people watching to understand, this 20.15 assessment to the two towns is not an increase of 20% on our total budget. If it were, it would be in the $9 million range. And, it's not 9 million, it's 3 million, including funding the level service budget. So, if anyone has any questions on that, please bring it up right now, so anybody watching can understand that. We are at about a $45 million budget. If you had a 10% increase, it would be 4.5 million. If you had a 20% increase, it would be $9 million. This is a 20.15 assessment to the town, including funding a level service budget to keep us where we are currently, and to add the $3 million student success budget. I'm trying not to be redundant, but I don't want anybody to get confused with this, because it's easy to get confused.
Sorry, Bob, just, I may be stating the obvious, but just, can you just clarify for people that that also doesn't mean a 20.15% increase in your property taxes?
No. It does not.[1333.33][1333.33](laughter) I'll go over that quickly. What it means in the town of Whitman is $1.24 per $1,000 assessment on your home. The medium home in Whitman is $270,940, which would equate to $336. In Hanson, it would be $1.13 per thousand. The medium home in Hanson is $292,500. $500 would be an increase of $331. If you were in the $450,000 range in Whitman, your increase would be 558. If you were in the $450,000 range in Hanson, your increase would be $509.
Per year?
Per year. Yes.
Actually, if you're from Whitman, do we have a deal for you?[1387.33][1387.33](laughter) Last year, both towns were nice enough to fund our technology bill, or article. Whitman decided to do that as a one-time debt exclusion. That comes off the books this year. So, the net effect in Whitman next year, if the student success budget did go through, for instance, it costs this year, for a $250,000 home, $158.97 out of your taxes. So, in effect, you're already $158 ahead, so to speak, so.
And, just for the people that are watching at home, this will be on the website tomorrow under Business Services. So, if you have any questions or didn't take your notes, this will be on the website tomorrow. Mike?
Mike?
Mike Mencello, 579 Pine Street. As a finance committee member, I just wanted to correct Mr. Smalls.
Oh, okay.
That's how it was voted. The town voted for an override, they approved it. The money that was raised for the technology was supposed to come from the override, and then we got some unexpected money from National Grid, and they ended up funding what would have been the override with the National Grid money. So, our taxes actually didn't increase, they actually decreased, I think it's like a penny per thousand.
Well, my tax bill went up, though.[1479.75][1479.75](laughter)
Valuation went up.[1482.41][1482.41](laughter)
Okay, well.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Again, I just, Mr. Trotter?
I'm feeling optimistic. Very optimistic.
Good. Even though you had Fred in sixth grade?
Yeah.[1498.00][1498.00](laughter) That's a different story.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for a 20.15 percentage assessment.
Do we have a second?
I have a second also. Michelle, who made the motion, a second?
I did.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
It's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you.[1524.97][1524.97](applause) Thank you.
Now, you get to vote the total budget number, Bob. You got to vote.
Yeah, the total budget number is $28. Okay. The total operating budget will be $49,714,344.
So, moved.
Second.
This will be the total budget number if everything happens at 20.15. Everybody understand that? Discussion, questions? And a motion, a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.[1577.83][1577.83](applause) Thank you, everyone. Let me just say this, this isn't the end of the game, this is the beginning of this, the very beginning. It starts with the vote. Now, you have to roll up your sleeves, get out there, talk to your neighbors, talk to anyone else, and if anyone has any questions, again, I hate to be redundant, do not hesitate to call me. My phone number is 617-538-0189. I say it on TV shows, I do. I'm not afraid to talk to anyone about this. Call me. And, if I can't, Smalls next.[1616.00][1616.00](laughter)
How much money did the town, would we get from National Grid this year?
I couldn't hear you, Sean.
How much money did the town, would we get from National Grid this year?
From NACGRID?
Yeah.
Mike? How much? How much?
I think exactly like $2.5 million.
Yeah, we're just short of $1 million, isn't it?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. Next issue. New business. Mr. Simonak, Program of Studies and Diplomas at Whitman-Hanson.
First, I have to follow Mr. Farrow, then this committee, so it's a pleasure working for you. This is, I'm emotional because I see growth, and this is the first time in six years that I feel like we can really move forward. So, I'm going to present to you two proposals today that I think brings us to a different level. Change, first of all, our Program of Studies. Came to you a couple of months ago, talking about our new high school schedule. We have moved away from a trimester schedule to a traditional full-year semester schedule. In turn, I had to look at our graduation requirements, because courses will not now be two credits per trimester, they will be four credits for a full-year course and two credits for a semester. The first proposal that I have for you outlines our current graduation standard of 106 credits to graduate from Whitman-Hanson Regional. Below that, almost identical is the proposal, but it will be 96 credits to graduate for the class of 2020. I know Michelle kind of put together a nicer-looking proposal than I had, I have this sheet right here, but it looks pretty similar. So, the first part of that is this year's graduation requirements, meaning four years of English, four years of math, three years of science, three years of social studies, foreign language, core credits in the core subjects, English, math, science, social studies, foreign language, D E, health, computer literacy, and all that. 106 credits. Again, each student, each class in a trimester is equitable, comparable to two credits. Moving to next year, full-year courses, kids can take up to seven classes, and their courses will be four credits each. Balancing that out, looking at all the other schools in the area, whether it's Duxbury, whether it's Silverlake, East Bridgewater, Situate, keeping in line with them, we move to four credits for a full-year course, two credits for a semester, 96 credits to graduate, meaning if I'm a diligent student and I take seven classes... Meaning, if I'm a diligent student and I take seven classes each year, I get 28 credits, I can even fail a class here or there and still make our graduation requirements. This is a solid program. We're not taking away anything else, but it's a change in our Program of Studies this year that directly affects the class of 2020, indirectly affects the class of 2017 for next year, 18 and 19. And there's a little grand water clause. Kids aren't going to get 96, because our kids already have earned up to 36 credits in their classes. So it's just a little bit of a tweak, not taking away any rigor in our classes, giving kids the opportunity, again, with the new schedule, to have one teacher and a core subject for the entire year, something that we don't need right now. And I think that's important. We talked a little about social workers and relationships, the teacher-student relationships that Mr. Orion has talked about. We don't actually have that in high school right now for every student in every class, because we switched. So that was the first hurdle that we did, came up with a new schedule. Now this is a change in our Program of Studies. Again, it's just mathematical and wording that I needed to bring it to the school committee to make sure that going forward, it's an official, it's an official piece of business, and it's something that is for our diploma.
An entertaining motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
Just want to say, personally, I really like this way of going forward with things. Much easier than those trimesters I've seen personally in other people. Trimesters can hurt a student in some ways. Going the full year, it'll take that sting out of their growth.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Anyone else? Discussion? Anyone? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The second piece.
And I think, as you all know, I'm an advocate for all kids in our school. I'm proposing a Diploma B, something brandy new for Whitman-Hanson Regional and the school this year. We have an awesome community evening school that offers a student a diploma who is a non-traditional student. After-school program, three days a week, based on credits. Students have a separate graduation ceremony, and it's a student that really doesn't fit the mold of a traditional high school student. What I see now, and maybe it's the fact that we don't have adjustment counselors and counselors in the elementaries in the middle, but I have a core group of kids, probably 50 to 20 per grade, that are not college-bound, that are not tech-bound, they didn't want to go to WOTEC, they wanted to come here, it's their home school, they want to go military, they want to work, they want to go to Massasoia. Our diploma requirements in the Diploma A, the diploma that you just validated, has some requirements in there that some of these students find really challenging to pass, foreign language in particular. So I called around to my colleagues, I'm very, tried to steal from all the other schools to come on and see what we can put together that's in the best interest of our students. Called Mike Bynum Hall, he's run into the same problem, smaller school, they don't have an alternative program. He and his leadership team went to the school committee with a Diploma B. Diploma B, which is a tweak to graduation requirements, and actually, you have the wrong memo. I made a tweak to that, where it says 82 credits or 86 credits to graduate, I'm asking for 92. I want kids to have more tangible experiences here at the high school. And those courses, those additional credits will be in the elective areas, which I hope with the student success budget will be in art and music and give some kids some tangible learning experiences here. But with this Diploma B, and I have three students in mind, I have one at my desk the other day, said he was going to drop out because he can't pass certain classes, and high school is not fun. He's having classes over and over again because he's failed. And I presented this to him, I said, "I'm going to the school committee with this proposal here with you in mind." So all he wants to do is go in the military. Wants to do that. This diploma, English for four years, math for three years, social studies for three years, science for three years, foreign language, an attempt, and then other credits behind that. If they don't pass the foreign language requirement, which is a graduation requirement for Diploma A, they can make up the credits. They have to attempt. Every eighth grader entering the high school is a Diploma A student. Every eighth grader will be scheduled for Diploma A credits. There's no tracking. You are you. At the end of their freshman year, sometimes sophomore year, things happen. Career change, I want to do this, or we have some failures. I have wonderful teachers who do remediation, things like that, but some students are just disengaged. And they're not, I'm not a four-year college kid with Simonak, what can I do? I don't want to drop out, and I don't want to go to CES. That's a very different program. So we've created this model, very, very similar to Diploma A with a few little tweaks, and I'm looking to catch the kid that's falling through the cracks right now. And I see that. And when I'm sitting across the table from the student that doesn't have an out except for CES or remedial classes at night and it costs $250 per, that's unacceptable. So I proposed this to Dr. Whitner, we looked at it, it's rigorous, they're not taking different classes, they're taking classes like everyone else, but we're tweaking the graduation requirement for them. They will be eligible for community college, the military, and workforce. On their transcript, it'll say Diploma B. On their diploma, Whitman-Hanson Regional High School, exactly like everyone else. No one needs to know who's who, except for the student and the parent that we've modified curriculum for. I think it's an opportunity for us to make sure we take care of all of our kids and give them an out to our school. This is, it's a template for you, it's worth discussing, something that isn't traditional around here. When I spoke to Mike at Hull, 15% of his students that do this, he's a school with a graduating class of 85, I'm a graduating class of 300. If I'm looking at it myself, 15%, it's 45 students. If I can catch 45 students and make high school better for them and make them a better citizen, I'm going to do anything I can to do that.
I just have a question. I like the idea, because we know that students learn at different rates and so forth and interests, but how would you go about identifying or screening those particular students?
At the end of freshman year, I look at a student, right now, and I think, I think we're going to fix some of that with the relationships of full-year courses, but after first trimester this year, I can already identify students that are at risk as freshmen because of their grades. Second, and moving forward next year, I'm looking at, after first semester, how do we do? You fail two classes, you fail three, mom and dad come on in here, what's the goals to guide us? Where do you want to, you want to go four-year school? Great, let's keep going, let's fix this year, let's add a class here, let's take a summer school class. At the end of sophomore year, we're still in credit recovery, which means now we're falling further behind. Here's an option for you. If you're not committed to going to a four-year school, and right now, your GPA is saying that you're not getting into a four-year school, you're getting into Massasoia, this might be an option for you, especially, and I want to stress that, foreign language hurdle and sometimes that math hurdle. We tend to get all our kids through math, but I've had seniors sitting in a class in late May, right before graduation, struggling to get through that foreign language piece because it's just so difficult for them. They're not diagnosed with a learning disability, they just don't have it, and they don't have the supports. So I wanted to really come up with a proposal that could get them through it, they've attempted it, and what I put at the back of this, it's not, it's not coming in from eighth grade. What I'm also, long run, I want to have the students that are at Hanson Middle and Whitman Middle, who think the high school is just a college-prep high school and it's way too hard for me, I'm going to WOTEC, even though they don't want to do a trade, they want to stay away from here because the reputation here is it's too hard. Want to get them here, and I want to give them an opportunity to see that we offer multiple programs for students that sometimes struggle.
Jeff, you said 92 credits is the alternate, and it's 96 for a normal student, so the main difference is the types of classes that are required?
I'm just looking at, yeah. So, you know, when I, when I get students that start to fail a course, and then they start having to shell out the dollars for making it up, I want to make it just a little bit easier for that student. We've given them the free and appropriate education, and now we're looking at, and as a parent, we're looking at making sure they graduate with something in their hands. And again, talking to the parents, it's the dialogue with mom and dad. At my school council meeting, that was one of the questions that came up, well, what about teachers helping students? What about parent input? Absolutely. No question about it. It's a, it's a contract with myself, and this isn't for 300 kids. It's really about 30 kids, 30 kids, and I just, I picture them right now, having the conversation with me, and these are current juniors saying, hey, look, instead of CES, and right about this time of year, I have kids transfer into CES because they're seniors who aren't doing that well. I want to give them an opportunity to make sure that they graduate with their class. There are traditional students who have struggled, and, you know, again, if things go well at the middle and the elementary, this might be moved in a couple of years. But right now, I'm seeing that, and we're just trying to offer them an opportunity.
And in terms of credentialing these kids, sending them out with a diploma, kids who get a Diploma B to the world, they have a high school diploma, so, so the reason that wouldn't be eligible for, say, a four-year college is it doesn't say you have to have a high school diploma, it says you have to have this many years of a language, this many years of this. So you're just looking at the list of things and the requirements.
Correct. So right now, to get a class of 2016 entering as a freshman in college after that, four years of math, four years of English, three years of science, including three years of a lab science, that's change. So state colleges are upping their ante, so I want to make it crystal clear to the parent and the student, you know, if we're looking at this, when I say three years of science, we include biology, because all kids take biology to take the MCAS examination. But I offer a tremendous amount of science electives. So again, I'm looking at going to maybe Massasoia, I'm going to take environmental, I'm going to take marine, I'm going to take the sciences I'm passionate about, I know I can get through, instead of chem. Because some kids' math and chem just don't work, and if they choose to go to Massasoia, and I see this as an opportunity, if you go to a community college and then you do well there, your opportunity to go to a state school is, there's partnership right there. So it's a win-win for our kids. I just want to take some of that anxiety and that stress off of them, too, especially when they're sitting in front of me in the doldrums of, what am I supposed to do? I can't get through this class. So the rigor's there, same classics. We're not saying you're in this class or this, they're in with everybody else, nobody knows what's going on. As a principal, I can make modifications to curriculum for students anyway. So if a student comes in from out of state, and we're supposed to have two years of foreign language for them, they're never going to get two years of foreign language, I waive that for Whitman-Hanson Diploma. Those are the things that, you know, I see as valuable for this. The interesting thing about a Massachusetts Diploma, I happen to be on the MCAS testing group, and in Massachusetts, school committees determine diplomas. So each individual school committee can have a variety of diplomas or credentials for their students. Massachusetts, you just have to pass MCAS. They have recommendations for diplomas, but it's science, math, and English, and it's a diploma. So school committees really can determine what they want their students to take, and I think committees are now looking at how they can frame a diploma that's in the best interest of students.
So would it be accurate to say, then, that all kids get the same diploma, but the ones who earn a Diploma B do it with waivers built in to their course of study?
Somewhat. Somewhat. I just wanted to make that official.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Well, so in other words, when you identify these parents, there is a heavy, as when the students, there's a heavy parental involvement in this, so someone's not going to get the idea of, well, I can kind of, it's not slide through, but...
Stay through.
Yeah, because there's always someone's going to be thinking...
Absolutely. You know, and this is the partnership I think we enjoy most. I mean, we look at sophomores at risk. Now, my guidance, you know, I don't try to determine or label a freshman at risk, but we have students that fail in the trimester. I've had students fail four classes out of six, one trimester, and then three out of six. Already, they're not on track to graduate. We're in remediation. With the semester and year-long classes, we should eliminate some of that, but that's an outreach for the, for our guidance counselors and our adjustment counselors. I already know our kids that are, that are in that area.
Right.
What I want to do is give, and sometimes for a parent, an opportunity, because they're so worried about graduation, and my theory is, in my ideal world, graduation is when you finish. It could be four years, it could be five years, it could be six. My kids right now, it's four years. If I don't graduate in four years, I'm going to drop out. We're trying to break that paradigm a little bit. This just gives, lightens up a little bit for some of those kids. I don't like the word dropout. We've done a great job with non-dropouts, I don't like that word. So I just want to give them another opportunity to be successful here.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Robbie.
I was just going to say, excellent job thinking outside the box with this. I mean, phenomenal. I didn't, I'll be honest, I didn't even realize that we even had these options the school committee had out, be able to do that. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
An entertaining motion to accept Diploma B?
So moved.
Mr. Evans, I was going to do that first, just so we could discuss some more. Come on up, Mr. Evans. Come on, Tom.
Thank you. I applaud the effort. I like thinking out of the box, and I think this is a good example of it. One thing I would like you to consider is for somebody to opt out of B when something turns on and it's not, I'm not going to do it anymore. It could be a change in the parental situation, housing, it could be anything, mental health, let them have an avenue to go back to A. And that's what I would suggest that's...
Thank you, Tom.
And I would say, everything's fluid. You know, a student after first year is like, hey, bells kick on, which is ideal, I want to take three years of foreign language, I'll get them those three years. Nothing's set in stone. This is almost an end opt, an opt-out, just another opportunity. We're flexible here, right? Someone like students go to CES and they can transfer back in, so we can be as fluid as we want to be. It's just another opportunity for success.
This is probably for Ruth. Ruth, are we approving, at the discretion of the principal, to come up with a plan for graduation on a case-by-case basis for students? Or is there more structure to it?
I think there's more structure, because what Jeff's outlined is a Diploma B. So you are giving the option at the high school to award what's called a Diploma B through the high school. I mean, they still have some flexibility, absolutely, but this formalizes it.
So like, for example, could, could we view, say, four years of English, three years of math as an absolute requirement? I mean, because, that's my question, basically.
That's it, yes.
Is that something, how we should view this?
The flexibility I have is when a kid transfers in from Texas, and they call English something else, I have to recreate and figure out how it fits into our curriculum. We don't have a lot of kids from out of state, but I do have Catholics, Catholic kids coming in from Catholic schools, from private schools, and their transcript looks very different than a Whitman-Hanson transcript. So we have to tweak that as best we can, and it wouldn't be fair for them to not be awarded our Diploma just because of a military relocation or things like that. So that's the flexibility. But traditionally, and again, South Shore Commonwealth, four years of English, four years of math, I think is invaluable here. I want to flex that a little for some of the kids with the senior math. Different systems have foreign languages requirement. My hometown of Embra, no foreign language requirement, no four-year math requirement. It's three years. Four-year traditional diploma. That's, that's our traditional diploma. This is a little non-traditional. It gives us, those students, a little bit of an opportunity to flex their scheduling a little bit. But it's not carte blanche for me, I just can't write something for students.
Basically, it's college is A, blue collar is B.
Correct.
So they can get into the military.
You know, and kind of what I'm looking at is a student who's not sure what they want to do, and then they want to go to Massasoia, and then they do extremely well. But they're, they're limited right now, and I don't like to transfer the, love the CES program, proponent of that. Very different program for different kids.
Just one thing to clear my mind is, I'm an eighth grader, I'm coming into the high school. I'm not going to have an option if I want to go Diploma A or Diploma B. I will be identified throughout the school year if I need to be in the...
Correct. And that probably won't even take place after freshman year. It's probably taking place, the middle of sophomore year is my best case.
Okay.
Absolutely not. You're getting, you're getting Spanish or French, you signed up for it, that's what you're getting, and we're going to see how you do. You're going to get tutoring through the year, to adjust, homework help after school. Remember, we still have the at-risk program grant after school. Late bus every day, or four days a week at 4:00, and homework help every day with Maureen Leonard and my staff. So as a freshman, you're getting more supports, it's when those supports start to shrivel away, I just want to make sure I have a catch-all for that kid that falls through the cracks.
Okay. And would we have like an update, say, somewhere within the school years, how that program's going once it gets going?
Absolutely. I love seeing you guys.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is to accept Diploma B. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you. But before, I just want to say, historical week or two in Whitman-Hanson at the high school, had the pleasure, best job in the world. Our show flyer was a grand champ two weeks ago in Connecticut, beat people that they'd never beaten. Before, it came up with a trophy that's like eight feet high. Before, it came up with a trophy that's like eight feet high. Our student council was awarded gold, the highest honor that a student council could get through the math school. They went to a conference for mass association of school councils. Great job there. Our girls won the state championship in cheerleading again. I can't even count how many times they've done that. And then, sitting and looking at the sea of black and red at Whitman Hanson at our, it was the best feeling as a principal, to see that community. And then to have the MIAA tell us last night, they've never had a team travel ever as well as we did last night. And they've had Boston PD and garden security tell us that we have the best fans they've ever experienced. So, thank you for supporting us. I just wanted to tell the community, it means a whole lot to us as a school, that everybody came out to support that boys run, which was phenomenal. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. I'm just going to take a little...
Didn't Decker win something, too?
Yep.
I don't, I can't tell you who went where.
I sent it to you today.
This date.
Yeah. I sent them the Decker today.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next is a statement of interest for Hanson. Hanson has issues with schools, as you know. So, Whitman, we sent a statement of interest in for the roof at DePaul School. Selectment in Hanson, we sent them some proposals, they're partners with us on the Hanson schools, obviously, but this is something the school committee has to vote. I'm going to read you three different scenarios. The town of Hanson has already voted on two of them to recommend. These are to formally send the letters of statement of interest to the mass school building authority to do XYZ. It starts the process, and then MSB gets involved, and the study goes on. This is the starting of the process, but by law, we have to vote it. So, let me read them to you. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on March 16, 2016, prior to the closing date, the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee of the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, in accordance with its charter by laws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the mass school building authority a statement of interest form dated April 8, 2015, for the McQuon Elementary School located at 38 School Street in Hanson, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories which an application may be submitted to the mass school building authority in the future. For replacement, renovation, and modernization of school facilities such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, ventilation systems, and to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility. And the replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the mass school building authority, or commits Whitman Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Mass School Building Association. That's the formal letter. I'm going to cut it down into the terms. This is for the replacement of the McQuon School. So, we're going to call this...
The date is actually 2016.
The date needs to read 2016, as I read right by it. It does say 2015. So, we're going to call this A for your own notes, because you've got to vote on, we have to have two of these. And I'm going to read you three. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on March 16, 2016, prior to the closing date, the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee of the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, in accordance with its charter and bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the mass school building authority a statement of interest form dated April 8, 2016, for the Hanson Middle School located at 111 Liberty Street in Hanson, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the mass school building authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, modernization of school facilities such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in the school facility, and replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the mass school building authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the mass school building authority, or commits Whitman Hanson Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the mass school building authority. We're going to call that B. What that means is, we're talking about putting an addition on the Hanson Middle School to house some students. When Hanson Middle School was built, I spoke with some of the members of the building committee, and we've done some research, off of the end by the library, there's a possibility of putting eight to 12 rooms. Here again, it's up in the air, but it needs to be sent by the 8th of April, 2016, and then it gets MSB involved, mass school building authority. So, we're going to call that one B. C. Resolved, hearing convened an open meeting on March 16, 2016, prior to the closing date, the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee of the Whitman Hanson Regional School District, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the mass school building authority a statement of interest form dated April 8, 2016, for the Indian Head Elementary School located at 726 Indian Head Street, Hanson, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the mass school building authority in the future for replacement and renovation or modernization of school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation, decrease energy-related costs in the school facility, and replacement or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the mass school building authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the mass school building authority, or commits Whitman Hanson Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the mass school building authority. We're going to call that C.
Did that very well.
That is far. The replacement of the Indian Head School are anything to do with updating all of it. So, just to, the selectmen have already voted on two of these. We kind of have to get an agreement and get this thing in the pipeline. Their preferred selections, I can tell you, are A and B. A, again, is replacement of the McQuon Elementary School or something that will have something to do with it. B is adding on to Hanson Middle. There's a fairly good chance if the B, excuse me, if the B solution comes to fruition and we juggle grades around, McQuon School could get shelved, and that might be the lesser of the cost dollars to the Hanson residents. Ruth has done some extensive, with the leadership team, about juggling grades, moving them. There's an option of possibly, and this gets pretty in-depth, of possibly putting an addition on Hanson Middle and moving pre-K over there. Segregating them from the population of what's in the building, that's one option. But this is a preliminary, get it going to the state. Nothing's etched in stone. If you look at the bottom, it says they're not authorizing anything, we're not committing to anything. They have to get going. It's kind of a formality, but I have to read the letters in, they have to be into the record. I went as fast as I could.
Do we...
I can add something.
Ruth, yes.
MSBA requires that, if we're going to do this, that one of them has to be McQuon School.
Right.
So, the real choice is whether it would be a renovation, a new, whatever that would be, in terms of Indian Head or Hanson Middle. But A has to go in. And the good news is, they can repopulate that with last year's submission, so hopefully it's not quite as involved as it was. And then the other piece is really up to the decision, and ultimately, it is the school committee that votes this.
So, an entertaining motion to accept A.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
We really need the part where we acknowledge the state doesn't guarantee us anything.
Yeah. They guarantee nothing. Last year, it took them...
We can't just pull that out.
They do guarantee that if you don't send it in, you won't get it.
Last year, we waited until December, and I was getting calls weekly.
This is the language that MSBA requires in order to just to submit the statement of interest.
I can guarantee it, right.
It sounded like your voice, Bob.
No, it wasn't.
Right.
I have a motion for A. Excuse me, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Okay.
B was adding on to Hanson Middle School or any of the above, boilers, windows, because when we add on, it's not going to be just as simple. And here again, I'm just putting it in layman's terms, throwing four on, putting a heat induct over there. It's going to take some other things. When Hanson Middle was built, it was built with a septic system to include 700 students. I think we have 430, somewhere in that vicinity there now, if my numbers are somewhat correct. That's B. An entertaining motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Dan? Fred?
I know in choosing option B, it would probably be the most economical. You wouldn't be hitting certain financial triggers as far as renovation costs and accessibility costs if you touched Indian Head. And if you were to do something to accommodate the preschool and the kindergarten kids, you'd have to do that in either school, whether it was Indian Head or if you built brand-new. At least at middle school, you don't have to worry about asbestos, you don't have to worry about lead paint. There are a lot of things that you don't have to worry about. Only consideration is being able to segregate the children, but you can scatter bus times.
And I do think it's important to recognize that whatever happens, there has to be a feasibility study. So, although it might be our concept that adding an early childhood piece is, seems good right now, that may not be what the feasibility study would come up with. It might come up with something, it's better to add fourth and fifth grade, or third, fourth, and fifth. So, it's important to know the feasibility study doesn't make any promises, even though if that's the concept that we have right now. So, I don't want people to think, oh, that's what's going to happen, because we don't know that. So, you know, and they would have to do a feasibility study, that would have to be voted by the town, just as it was before.
Further discussion? To further trail on to what Ruth is saying, Don?
Yeah, adding eight to 10 rooms to Hanson Middle, does that mean you'd be closing McQuon?
You'd have to close McQuon. That would be...
So, does adding eight to 10 rooms, that...
This is why you do a feasibility study. A feasibility study will tell you that, I'm not an architect, I don't know. They also will, they will do, they will do an enrollment projection, they will check and see if that really seems reasonable to do the things that we're looking to do. Bottom line is, when you're going to get 50% or more reimbursement, they're the ones making the decision. So, that's not guaranteed what size it would be, what it would cost. So, you're kind of shooting in the dark sometimes with this. You know, the other piece, too, is to consider with the Indian Head School, and we did bring this up when we spoke to the Board of Selectmen, that's a building that's going to continue to have cost to the town. There's still asbestos there, there's still lead paint there, and it's a rather unusual design to be energy efficient. So, that's still, and even if you're going to retrofit it in some way, there'll be some costs. So, I think it's important to look at that as well. And the feasibility study that was conducted for the failed project would be more relevant to Indian Head. It will not be relevant at all to putting an addition on to the Indian Head School.
And to further that, MSBA, after being involved with that last project, is going to come out, they're going to get involved with the feasibility study, and they may say, no, this isn't what we want to do at Hanson Middle.
Might be a better way to look at this.
We want to do this. This is, again, I'm just trying to reiterate without being redundant, this is getting a process started to get involved with MSBA. They may wait till next December and say, sorry, you guys are out, see you next year. This is no guarantee.
We may only submit two.
We can only bring in two, but I have to vote on all three. We've already accepted A. I have a motion on B. And A and B were the two, the selectmen wanted. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. C is for the same deal, only with an Indian Head remodeling project or a replacement or any of the above. We already know, we went through a project that was failed with the Indian Head replacement, and we already know where that was with MSBA and how that went with the town. As I said, the preferred were the first two. An entertaining motion to accept C.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Yes.
Was this option rejected by the selectmen, or has it simply not come up yet?
They discussed all of them.
They discussed them all.
I mean, that one is definitely more costly. We know that when it was one of the six options before we went to the preferred design, that at that point, the estimate was $52 million to do that, with a reimbursement of about 56 to 58 percent. I think they're assuming that in addition to Hanson Middle is going to be significantly less money than doing something like that. That estimate was to be, would be to remove the lower level at the Indian Head and have a two-story addition. That's what came out at $52 million, and that was July of 2012. So, you can extrapolate that that would be more than $52 million today.
And again, it's not saying that MSBA won't come back and say, put an addition on Indian Head. This is what we think you should do, and then a decision will have to be made. This is the starting out of the gate process.